My name is Ellie Mayenin. I am treasurer, currently the interim town clerk and delinquent tax collector. I am going to call this meeting to order because it is even a little after ten and we need to get the ball rolling. So with that, I'd like to call it to order.
Thank you Ellie, and welcome everyone to our first Saturday Guilford Town Meeting. Article one, to elect a moderator for the coming year. Oh, you are? Okay. Veranda's supposed to do that.
Yeah, because he's not the moderator yet. Article one, to elect a moderator for the ensuing year. Are there any nominations? Yeah?
I know they did. Say no.
Okay. Are there any other? Oh, thank you. Are there any other nomin... Yeah, it was seconded. Yes, it was seconded by Carol Mills. Are there any other nominations for moderator? That being none, all in favor of Rick Seymour for moderator, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Or nays? Abstentions? Okay. We have elected Rick Seymour and you can take it away.
Thank you Veranda, Veranda, thank you for your votes. I'll read my usual instructions and exhortations before we start, same as last year. Thank you for electing me again. John Franklin is going to serve as my parliamentarian. He may not be here yet, but he'll help me out if I should step into trouble. This is your meeting. You can appeal any decision I make. You can appeal any decision I make and overrule me with a simple majority. You can also vote to change Robert's rules with a simple majority, but you cannot change this Vermont state statutes governing town meeting. A few instructions before we begin. Speaking to the body is limited to Guilford registered voters. Is there anyone in the room who is not a Guilford registered voter? If so, could you just stand up so we know who you are? Thank you. Anyone else? We can suspend the rules to allow people who are not registered voters to speak. It takes a two-thirds majority to do that, but you will probably hear me say something like, "If there's no objection, or with your consent, I'd like to let so-and-so speak." And that will save the time for two-thirds of vote. To make a motion or an amendment, or to add to the discussion, please raise your hand and wait for me to call on you, and then stand, state your name, and you can have the road you live on if you'd like to. A motion can be amended, and an amendment can be amended, because there can be no third amendment, because that's too confusing. If you feel that the result of a voice vote is not clear, you can call for a division. And if there's a second, we will stand and be countered by the Board of Civil Authority. You can request a paper ballot if you have a second, and if six voters agree with you. It takes seven to request a paper ballot. And if we do a paper ballot, use the paper cards you were given when you came in. One for each paper ballot. Please address your remarks to me, not to the person who just spoke before you. And whatever you say should be directly related to the amendment or article under discussion. I will rule you out of order if what you are saying is not germane to the article. I ask you to please refrain from applauding a speaker with whose remarks you strongly agree. Applause can be divisive and can add to the tension in the room. Of course, it's fine to applaud someone who has just finished making a presentation or a report to the assembly. Robert's rules allow 10 minutes per speaker. With your permission, I would like to change that to five minutes if there's no objection. Does anyone object to a five-minute limit on speakers? Okay, then we'll go with five minutes. A few more things before we start. You may not end your questions with "Call the question" to cease debate. If you want to call a question, raise your hand and wait for me to call on you, which will be after everyone else has spoken who had their hand up before you. If the question is called and seconded, we will immediately take a vote to cease debate. It takes a two-thirds majority to cease debate. Sorry, this keeps slipping down. If you've spoken once during a discussion, you have need to wait until everyone else who wants to speak has spoken before you speak again. Robert's rules do not allow a third speaker, a third time to speak, but that can be changed with a two-thirds majority vote to suspend the rules. And I'd like to close with these remarks with an implication that they use up in Danville, Vermont. Let's have a moment of silence and reflection as we are gathered here in civil debate. We gather as a community in the oldest sense of the word. We come together to try to make decisions about what is right and what is wrong. Let us advocate for our positions. Let us remember that there's a huge difference between saying "I am right" and "I believe I am right." Remember that our neighbors with whom we disagree are good people who also want what's best for the town. And let's remember that in the end, caring for each other is far more important than any difference we may have. Thank you. Now let's get started. Do I hear a motion?
Article number two is to hear the report of the town auditors.
Article two, hear the report of the town auditors. Is there a second?
There is a seconded.
Okay. Is there a report from the auditors?
Kathy.
Thank you. I hope you all got the town report in the mail. If you did not, we would like to know your address so we can make sure you get it next year. I have a few corrections. I hope you all got the article that's up here. There are three errors. The first is page 15, the highway fund. The second is page 16, the town report. Mostly, these are errors in transcription. And on page 26, the delinquent tax report, that's an error in flowing it from one program to another. All the information was correct, just in the wrong place. Rosetta Morris-Whimmer. Her death was in a tragic accident on April 11th, but it was missed. We missed it to put on the memory片. She was born in Rayiffan Guilford and is buried here. She's the daughter of Dale and Eric, sister of Sky. And Rosetta would have turned 40 in February. That's the end of our report. Thank you.
Thank you Kathy. Any questions? Microphone for Tammy.
Hi Tammy Sirkin. Could you tell us what the changes are? I was just going to jot them down in my book. You said page 15, 16, and 26? It's on that paper. Okay. While I have the microphone, one last question. Is it possible to get the town reports earlier in the future? I don't know why we know. It's... I didn't know it was...
The answer was, we do it as fast as we can. Any other questions or comments on the... Yes?
Where is the paper that he's talking about? Oh. Thank you.
This information is on the website, too.
Is that the page of corrections?
Yes.
Okay. It's also on the town website. All right, let's move on to Article three, to hear the report of the library trustees. Is there a second?
I can hear and I'm taking minutes.
I'll second that, Ellie.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Laura Lawson Tucker, and I'm one of the trustees, co-chair with Judith Sirkin. And I'm here to give you some highlights from our report that we submitted that's here in the town report. But first, I'd love to have trustees stand up so townspeople know who are the trustees just by face. Yeah, so there we go. There's Nika, and Sandra, and Judith, and John, and who's...
Josh.
Josh, and Josh. Thank you. So, last year at town meeting, Kathy Wilken was still our library director, and she was going to be departing June 30th. And we all stood up and applauded Kathy for her 26 years. We felt that now that Kathy actually has left as the library director, and we have a new director, we wanted to formally appreciate Kathy, and then after that, welcome Amber. So Kathy, the one major point I want to make is that Kathy, you really helped to build Guilford Free Library into the treasured resource that the library is in our town. And she spent 26 years doing that. So could we honor Kathy? And then we have flowers and chocolates for Kathy. Thank you Kathy. Thank you. So, what a year of change for the Guilford Free Library, saying goodbye to a director of 26 years. It's a lot of years. And then welcoming Amber. Where is Amber? Amber, stand up please. I want to make sure you can really see Amber. Come out here. Amber has made it clear she's a little bit shy. So I'm going to put you on the spot. So Amber is doing just an amazing job, following on the footsteps of Kathy as our legendary library director. And so we wanted to formally, as a town, welcome Amber. So Amber is here partially because you, the townspeople, our taxpayers, agreed to create the library director position as a full-time position, so that we knew, the trustees knew, that to attract qualified applicants, we needed a full-time position. And so here's a thank you to taxpayers for doing that. And as a result, we have Amber, and Amber has embraced her job and is infusing lots of new energy and new ideas. And a lot of that's programming, and I wanted to make sure that everyone understands that the Friends... And now if you're a Friend, could you stand up? I see defeated there. If you're a Friend, can you stand up? Because Friends are a separate organization. They're not a town group. They're their own nonprofit group. And they are working really hard to fundraise. With the fundraising dollars they generate pays for our programming. So I want to make sure, you know, taxpayers understand that. So it's been very exciting to have Amber and then have lots of new and different programming that's happening, building on all the previous success. Let's see. In the town report, it's a great report, and there are numbers there. So my favorite thing is to see numbers. And you'll see that in your town report of these increase of numbers. And the increase of numbers shows you an increase of patrons, an increase of numbers of books being borrowed, increased use of online ebooks, and increase of free museum and park passives. Now you don't have to be a parent with young children to borrow those. Those are free. And it's a pretty wonderful resource for us. And my final thing, or one of my final things, is to point out just some of our very eclectic programming that we have meant for all ages. One is a cribbage club attracting a lot of attention Saturdays at 3:00 at the library. Amber brought to the community center, or Broadwood Community Center, what is called Rapid Reviews. And this was children and adults giving reviews of books. You can hear an audio recording of that event on our website, and so I'd really recommend that you listen to it. And the summer reading camps get fully enrolled. They're free. What a great resource for families. Camps are very expensive, and so I think we have a lot to appreciate with the Friends to make that possible, that we can offer those free. And finally, you know, we are dedicated for being a valuable resource for everybody. So if you have ideas of something you'd like to see at the library, please reach out to Amber. We welcome everyone. Doors open. Programming is free, and we have online books, ebooks, and we're here for you. So thank you everyone very much.
Thank you Laura. All right, very pleasant to the board. Okay. Article five, do I hear a motion? Article four, sorry. To elect the following officers: cemetery commissioner one, library trustee two, and trustee of public funds one. Okay, Article four. I read these again. It's a requirement. It's a little tedious, but bear with me. To elect the following officers: one cemetery commissioner, two library trustees, and one trustee of public funds. Do we have nominations and seconds? Eric.
You need to get him a microphone.
He's coming.
Eric Morse, North Belden Hill. I nominate as a cemetery commissioner Carol Shaw.
Is there a second? And with your permission, we'll hear all the nominations, and if it's not too complicated, we'll vote on them all as a slate. Are there nominations for library trustees? John.
Hi, John Shaw, East Mountain Road. I'm also a library trustee, and I want to nominate Mika Fotopoulos and Jeanette Tokars, who are both finishing up their first term, and they've been great and want to run again. So I would nominate them.
Is there a second? Any other nominations for library trustees? All right. Is there a nomination for trustee of public funds? Todd McLean.
I nominate Todd Mandel.
Oh, microphone.
Do I still need a microphone?
Thank you. I nominate Todd Mandel. He's been a trustee of public funds for several terms and would like to run again. Are there any other nominees? Is there a second? Any other nominations for trustee of public funds? Okay. If the nominations are closed, we will now vote to elect the following officers. For cemetery commissioner, help me out, who? I've already forgotten. Carol Schnawell, thank you. Mika Fotopoulos, and Jeanette Tokars for library trustees, and Todd Mandel for trustee of public funds. All those in favor of that slate signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. And you have elected them to your offices. Article five, do I hear a motion?
Shall the voters of the town of Guilford...
A little closer.
There we go. Thank you. Shall the voters of the town of Guilford authorize highway fund expenditures in the amount of $1,149,557 for fiscal year July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2026, for which revenues will be raised through taxes and other sources? Seventeen VSA Section 2664. A 4% increase over last year. That is considered level funded, even with the increased cost of some essentials like salt, gravel, culverts, and health insurance.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Article five, shall the voters of the town of Guilford authorize highway fund expenditures in the amount of $1,149,557 for fiscal year July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2026, for which revenues will be raised through taxes and other sources? Is there discussion? I see no hands. Okay, let's vote. Voting on Article five, to approve the town budget as written. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. And you approve the town budget. The highway budget, thank you. Boy. Where's my parliamentarian? Article six, do I hear a motion?
Article six, shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $286,550 for the Guilford Volunteer Fire Department, and the GFFD will speak to this.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry, who's second? Diakel.
Diakel Kramer.
Okay, Article six, shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $286,550 for the Guilford Volunteer Fire Department? Is there discussion? Yes, in the back.
Hi, Tara Silverberg. Ooh, hello. Lake Ridge Road. I'm not sure what I'm looking at wrong, but the number in the article looks very different to me than the total expenses at the bottom of page 43, fiscal year 26 proposed. I'm curious why they're different, or what I'm looking at incorrectly.
Is there someone here from the fire department? Is Beth here?
Beth is standing up.
Oh, sorry, Beth. Thank you. A lot of people have their... Beth is being shown the town report.
Yep, got it. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure I understood the question. So the question was why the total expenditures in our budget does not match the number in the town appropriation? And that's because we raise additional funds beyond what we ask the town to appropriate. Mostly, those funds come from fundraising efforts, and you'll see that listed at the top under the income section of the budget. We've got $38,000 from fundraising income and $5,000 from donations.
Are there any other questions? Or Tara, sir?
Hi, I do have a few questions. I think that I'll start with a few statements. I did see your presentation, Beth, and I watched it again this morning. I realized that the NFPA has a recommendation to replace vehicles after 25 years. One, or a few questions is what is the year make, model, and mileage of this truck? I'm really trying to run on a platform of keeping taxes lowish, you know, keeping, lowering taxes so people can afford to live here. I know that you are only asking $18,000, but if the truck is $1.2 million, that's a huge expense. And I'm just concerned, is it actually necessary right now? I would like to potentially make a motion to amend this and wait a year. Let's see, what else?
Can I answer that one at a time?
You sure can.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate it. Yeah, so let me speak to the $18,000 increase first. So the $18,000 increase is to one single line item in our budget, and that's to increase the capital allocation to our truck fund. The rest of our budget is level funded. And our plan for increasing the truck fund is to build it up over the next few years. As you mentioned, we did some preliminary research into the cost of trucks, and they went, they more than doubled over the last five years. So the last truck we purchased was in 2019 for about $560,000. Preliminary quotes are coming in at 1.3. They also have a lead time of three to four years. So we're not proposing to purchase a truck right now. What we're proposing is to start building up that truck fund so that when the time comes to purchase the truck, we can make a larger down payment rather than having to make larger loan payments, if that makes sense. And so we also are not necessarily proposing that we follow the NFPA guideline of 25 years. That is a recommendation. We're not required to follow that. We would love to follow that, but recognize that it may not be fiscally possible for us to do that. So what we'd like to do is to build up that truck fund and then see how much money we can save and extend out the life of our truck for a few more years. We don't want to go, you know, 10, 15 years beyond the life, because that introduces a whole nother set of risks. But we recognize the need to push that lifespan beyond 25 years to the point where we've raised enough money that we can put a large debt down payment on and keep our loan payments the same as what we have budgeted today. And so if...
And so if the town put in $18,000 for the next five years, that's $90,000. And I know that you have some reserve funds, right? I'm looking at a number of 180 or 142.
Yep.
But even in five years, that's still like $300,000 or $400,000. So we would still have to finance $900,000.
Yeah, so what we're actually proposing, and I spoke to this briefly at pre-town meeting and certainly answered questions today as well. What we would like to do is actually double the amount of money that we have budgeted to our truck fund, which is currently $36,000. What we're proposing is to increase it by $18,000 this year and potentially increase it another 18 next year. So we have a total of $72,000 each year going into that fund, which will really boost it. And then, like I said, build it as much as we can. And when, you know, those two lines intersect, when we have enough money and the, and the truck is ready to be replaced, that's when we would make that purchase decision. And additionally, you mentioned the reserve funds. So we have two reserve funds right now. We have the truck reserve fund and we have the capital reserve fund. You may remember, it's actually Article seven is our capital reserve fund, $35,000. So we're continuing to build that fund as well. That was used previously to pay for the debt service on building our new fire station. It's allocated to capital purchases. So we would like to be able to use some of that fund to offset the purchase of the truck as well. Certainly not all of it because we need to maintain some funds for, for maybe building improvements down the road. But it makes sense to use that towards one of our largest capital expenses, which would be the truck.
How many miles does the truck have on it?
About $25,000. Is, sorry, Jared Bristol, fire chief. Two trucks are going to be in question soon. It's gonna, we have a 2006 tanker and a 2008 engine one, which we're actually going to do first because it's used more. It's more of a frontline piece. The engine, I would say, has about 25,000, 30,000 on it. I'm not sure on those mileages exactly.
And there was actually an article, I don't know if anyone saw it, in the New York Times recently talking about aging fire trucks and the cost that has gone up significantly since the COVID era. So recommend looking into that article if you haven't. It was really, it was really reflective of the challenges that we're facing here.
I just, I know a little bit about trucks and 25,000 miles on a truck is nothing. So.
Yeah, it's more the apparatus on the truck, so the pumps and all of that equipment rather than just like the chassis of the truck.
I just feel like, I think that waiting another year and revisiting and talking about this much more, to me, is important with such a big sticker price. And even if we're gonna finance $900,000 with interest at 6%, that's another $900,000. So it's, I think that more, in my opinion, more, more information and, and seeing what avenues to take is important.
Yeah.
But we have a whole town here, so.
Sure. Yeah, we would, we would propose waiting until we can finance between 300 and 350,000 because otherwise our loan payment would be so large. So that's why we're taking this proactive step to try to build up that reserve fund so we can make that larger down payment. So you certainly can vote to delay it, but what that will do is delay the building up of that fund so that we can make the purchase, which potentially leaves us at risk to have to make a larger loan payment down the road if a truck fails or, or starts to deteriorate too early. So we really are trying to take a proactive approach that's fiscally responsible, not, not proposing to purchase a new truck anytime soon, but just trying to plan ahead and be prepared.
Okay, Tara, did you want to propose an amendment?
I think that more people, if they have things to say, should talk before that.
Okay, Jill?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions, just because, Beth, I did read that article in both the New York Times and the Wall Street Journal. And at the end of that article, there was a paragraph that said, "To help keep costs down, Rev Group," which is one of the six largest truck manufacturers in the country, "has created a more standardized vehicle that actually can be made less than a, can be built in less than a year if fire departments go that way." I talked with Larry Daniel with the Rev Group, as well as Mike Vernon, and he said he believed the industry could return to more normalized manufacturing timelines in 12 to 18 months. And if you did a standard, I was just wondering what kind of options you're looking at in terms of a truck, if it had to be new at 1.2 million, or you could do a standardized version, so instead of getting 100 customized points to it, you get 85 and it drops the price down to 750,000. Or there's also, I was, I've learned in the process that there's, along with the standardization, there's like demo versions that are available from manufacturers. So for example, if you're looking at a pumper with a 1,500 gallon per minute, 1,000 gallon water tank, and they've got a demo for 800 gallons, but still 1,500 GPM, you know, and it's 750 instead of 1.2, is that something that you guys would take a look at?
Yes, so we recently formed our truck committee, which is the preliminary step to looking into these kind of large purchases. So those are all considerations that will be looked at by the truck committee. Because we are so far ahead of when we would actually need to place the order, we have lots of time to start looking into those options. So we're looking at purchase, we're looking at lease, we're looking at the type of truck. All of those things are being considered, but we're still, you know, years in advance of actually making that decision.
Okay, cool. Because they were saying that the next phase of the product standardization is an Aerial Ladder Truck, and then May 1st, they're looking at the standardization of pumpers, which I think is a good idea.
Yeah, and I mean, hopefully by the time we need to make this decision, prices will be down and we'll be having a different conversation, which is why we're starting the conversation early.
Sheila, Patrick.
Sheila Morris, Melody Hill. I'm going to go back to the first question that was raised here. The article reads, "Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $286,550." The line on page forty-three reads, "Net town per sheet appropriation, $268,550." So it looks to me like that is a simple transposition of numbers.
If you look under fiscal year twenty-six proposed in the fire department budget, it does read 286,550 under line 4220, net town appropriation. 268,550 was this fiscal year, '25, and the next fiscal year, which we're voting on today, is 286,550.
Other comments? Questions, David?
David Eastman, Weatherhead Hall. I just want to speak to the question that Tara raised, and I thought it was answered very well. And I also listened to the informational meeting. And I just want to strike that, you know, this sounded like very responsible, pre-planning, fiscally conservative way of protecting the, the town taxpayers from additional costs down the road. And the questions about mileage, when they're not going to buy a truck for a while. And it just, it sounds like they do a very responsible job of researching and doing the best they can for the town. And I just want to thank them for providing the service that they provide and the conservative nature by which they do their budgeting to give us the best value.
Other comments? Lisa in the back? Oh, well, no, sorry, before Lisa.
Gary Now, Weatherhead Hall. I was just curious if any research has been done or any numbers are available to refurbishing what we've already got?
Yeah, like I said, the truck committee was recently formed and that is one of the things that's on the table. So we are so early in the process, again, that we don't have all of those numbers, but those are certainly options that will be considered before any decisions are made.
In the back?
Hi, I'm Lisa Ford, Evergreen Drive. I, from the questions that the select board are asking, it seems to me that you are just learning about some of the, you just saw the reported pre-town meeting, is that the case? And I, then I just wonder what the process is. Like, do you, how does the fire department approach these things with the select boards? So that strategic plan could be developed together? Just wondering.
Yeah, so we submit our budget to the select board in December and we attend a select board meeting and present our budget to them at that time. And I give a similar spiel.
Other questions?
Hi, Al Kumjin, Evergreen Drive. I was curious if reserve funds like this are allowed to be invested so that they don't lose value relative to inflation while they're sitting there?
Beth, can you answer that?
It's a great question that I don't have any answer to, but can certainly look into.
Other questions? Dick? John?
John Franklin, Weatherhead Hall. I'm also on the board and I'm on the department. Twenty-five thousand miles isn't very far, but it can go two miles and run for six hours under a load. If a house fire goes out on the interstate in the salt and it can sit for most of a day. So the mileage on a fire truck isn't the same as it's, the time it's going to run. And that's a big consideration that we have to take in, as well as the, we can, we're asking for a little more now, so we don't have to ask for more more later. And we were just thinking if we build up this fund and not, we didn't want to have a big jump, but we do anticipate needing more money. So that's where we're coming from with the 18,000. We talk about it every month at our meeting and think about it all the time. So it's not like it's undiscussed. And I spent three months looking into it. We talk about it constantly, so. I, it's well thought out what we're doing and so I just wanted people to think that behind the scenes stuff, too.
Any other questions? Yes. Mary?
Hi, Mary Collins from Carpenter Hill Road. I have a question, how many volunteer fire people do we have? And how much would we have to pay them in annual salary? How much are we saving by having a volunteer fire department? I want to thank you for all you do.
So that was not a proposal, right? Any other questions? Are we ready to vote? Tara, you want to make an amendment?
I was already on, no, I do not.
Okay. Seeing no other hands, oh, are you waving? Are you wanting to speak? Oh, waving, okay. Let's vote on Article six. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $286,550 for the Guilford Volunteer Fire Department? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. And you have passed Article six. Now, we've got a number of thank yous and proclamations and announcements that we have to thread into the, in between the articles. I was wondering if Zahn wanted to speak briefly right now. He's got a proclamation from the Secretary of State.
Good morning. My name is Zahn Estes and I am your representative to the State House in Vermont, in Montpelier. And I, I, first of all, would like to thank you for your, your support and thank you for giving me this opportunity to represent you. It's a remarkable learning opportunity for me. We're halfway through the first session at this point and it's like a fire hose coming at me. I'm learning so very, very much. I want to just acknowledge that I, there's a town meeting report that's on most of your many seats, if you, if you want one. And, and you don't have one, I can provide it to you. I have a bunch more here. I'll put them over here on this table right here, next to Ellie. And then there's a small book called Freedom and Unity, which is Vermont's motto. And this is a very wonderful book put out by the School for Cartoon Studies up in River Junction. If you don't have a concept quite about how things work in Vermont, this is actually a wonderful book. I recommend it. These have been provided to us to hand out to every Vermonter. So I have a number of them here and they're, they're over here on Ellie's desk as well. You're all here today, I'm here with you to do one of the most wonderful things that happens in America and that's democracy at work. We're all right here in this room right now, talking about issues that matter to this community, making decisions today that matter to this community. It's very inspiring that the state of Vermont does this. There are only a few other states in the country that take this opportunity to have this form of government. And it, I find it incredibly moving. So I have the opportunity to do something like this at the State House as well and gather people from all over the state to do this kind of work. It's remarkable. I want to just let you know that about 50%, no, excuse me, that's not right, about a third of the legislature this year is new to the legislature, both in the House and in the Senate. And then another third was elected probably just two years ago. So most of the legislature at work right now is, is relatively new compared to the dean of the House who's been there for 40 years. So it's a remarkable group of people and I'm learning a lot. I see respect, I see collaboration, I see careful consideration of people, of one another, and ideas exactly what's going on here. I see a willingness to work very hard and I also, also see a lot of appreciation and joy in getting the work done. I'd like to just say a word about the, just because it's going to affect us all, about the national picture from the legislative point of view, and that's that we, we don't yet know very much about what, how things are affecting us. People are watching very carefully. Our state treasurer, Michael Pichak, from Rattleboro. Our state's attorney is also involved in, in, in placing Vermont in participation in, with various sorts of legal issues that are addressed, that are coming toward the states here. We are also very aware, watching very carefully budgetarily, this, the legislature is right in the middle of preparing its budget right now for the next fiscal year. And it's really a very difficult thing to do. We don't know how things are going to be affected. I'm on the Human Services Committee, which is the committee that essentially addresses all the protected categories in Vermont. That means a lot of Medicare and a lot of Medicaid programs are, are under the purview of the committee that I'm on. And it's very troubling to anticipate what might be coming our way. The, the Human Services Committee oversees a very large part of the state's budget and a lot of that is Medicaid. So I don't have anything to tell you right now because we still don't know too much, but we're watching and being very careful. I will promise to you, and I've heard other legislators say the same thing, that in what's happening right now across our country and the kinds of quick and, and active decisions that are being made, my main task will be to, to do what I can to uphold the democracy that we share here in Vermont and that I will try to work very hard on behalf of and that I will try to work very hard on behalf of all of us, along with my colleagues, to make sure that Vermont stands as a bastion for freedom and unity. That's what I really care about. So. I also want to just say that the voters in the last election were incredibly clear. There's not a person in the legislature, or the governor, nor the governor, who doesn't understand three or four or five basic issues that need to be addressed. And I can attest to the fact that everyone that I see is at work on these same issues. There aren't competing topics coming into the discussion right now. That's, the first one above all is lowering taxes in the state of Vermont. We're doing what we can, I don't have anything to tell you right now because we're just in the budgeting process, but I can sense a lot of energy going in that direction. There's also, if we're going to lower taxes, we need to reframe the structure of education in the state of Vermont. There's no question. I don't know if you, if you know that in the state of Vermont, there are fifty-five different school districts, and there are over a hundred different school, I guess I would call them collaborations, something like the Wyndham Southeast Supervisor Union. And that model, along with the notion of healthcare, which is the next important issue, the healthcare cost is simply not sustainable. So the state of Vermont needs to look at a different structure for education, and that's being undertaken right now this year. Also, a very important issue that we understood from voters is the notion of housing, and how to address creating more housing, not just in one or two areas of our economy or in our communities, but all across the board. Those four topics, lowering taxes, education, housing, and healthcare, are the things that the House and the Senate are focusing on this year. I want to just tell you also that I serve, I'm working on with a couple of caucuses that have no, these caucuses don't have any actual, we can't introduce bills, or we can't move things in any particular direction, but we can advocate and legislate and talk to our legislators around topics that are of importance. And one of those, one caucus I'm serving on is the Rural Caucus of Vermont. And it's a tripartisan caucus, and we hear topics every single week. And we're beginning to, in the budgetary process, we're beginning to get organized about some topics that really matter for rural Vermont. I'm also on the Older Vermonters Caucus. Not because I'm older, but because Vermont is getting older. And there are issues about how, what it means to get older in Vermont and be able to sustain a life here in the state, so I serve on that. I'm also on the Democratic Communications Team, and that's to make certain that, for instance, the Democratic, this team has a press conference every single week, as does the governor. I'm not even certain that the Republicans have a press conference, but the Democrats have one every single week to talk about the various issues that I spoke about earlier. Okay, so I just, that's a quick rundown of some of the things I'm doing. I want to let you know that the Secretary of State caught wind of Dan Zombroski's service to our community. I don't think Dan's here this morning, but I have a little, a little thing here to honor Dan for his forty-seven years of service here in the town of Guilford. And it's signed by Sarah Copeland Hanses, Vermont Secretary of State. And so I think we've done a lot to celebrate Dan and many of the people that serve in this wonderful community. I'll make sure that Dan gets this on behalf of the Secretary of State. Then, the last thing I'd like to do is just tell you, please, to reach out to me, many of you. Some of you do, I hear from some of you already, and I'm grateful for that. I, I want to hear from you, I have monthly Wyndham One meetups, I call them. There's one this next Saturday over at BBCC at ten o'clock in the morning. You can be in touch with me via email. You can also sign up for my newsletter on my website. If you just type my name into Google and put Vermont, my website will come up. And it's also on the back of, the information about how to reach me is on the back of this report. So I'm here to serve every single person in Guilford and Vernon. I'm learning a lot how to do that, and I need your help in doing that. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Zahn. Just a comment from me, I'm looking around. Oh, there's a few chairs up front for you people that are sitting and don't want to sit. I'm a purist about town meeting, I was skeptical about going to Saturday, but given that this is a pretty low-key meeting, the turnout seems, seems like more than it would have been had we were meeting on Tuesday. I could be wrong, but that's, that's how it looks. Okay, Article Seven, do I hear a motion?
Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $35,000 for the Guilford Volunteer Fire Department Capital Improvements Fund? Same as last year, voters approved this annual appropriation in 2020. The GVFD can speak to this.
There a second?
I'll second then.
Chip. Discussion, any questions? Yes, Dolores.
Thank you. I would like to amend that this fund goes into the truck fund as opposed to just going into the building fund. Is that, how would that?
Yeah, that's actually something we've talked about within the Fire Department, too, is combining these two funds. They're, they're both capital funds. One is earmarked specifically for the truck purchases. The other is just a general capital fund. Previously, it was used to pay for the new building. It would make our lives a lot easier if it was all combined into one. It was structured this way because the town previously held the bond for the building of the fire station, so that thirty-five thousand was paid for out of the town fund. So that's why it's a separate article, but I think it's a great idea.
So are you offering an amendment, Dolores?
Indeed.
Okay, if there's a second.
I'll second then.
Okay, there's no problem with the town appropriation? Going into a different fund?
Just to clarify, I think if we did combine them, we would want to make sure to call it a capital reserve fund, not earmarked specifically for the truck, because then we wouldn't be allowed to use the money for building improvements, et cetera. So to have one capital fund would be the easiest. Then we can use it for trucks, we can use it for the building, however we need to.
Dolores, is that acceptable to you?
It is.
It is. Any, any comment, questions about the amendment? We have an amendment on the floor, which would change the article to read, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $35,000 for the Guilford Volunteer Fire Department Capital Fund?
I'd like to hear from Ellie if there are any issues that she sees about this.
Have we got a microphone to Ellie?
I can yell.
Yeah, go ahead and yell, but.
I think that's a good question. I would have to probably ask our professional auditor if there's any issue. I personally don't see one, but I would have to ask before that could, before I could know. Because I don't know the history that Beth spoke of.
So are you recommending against this amendment?
Not necessarily, no.
Can I say something?
Sky.
Yes, sorry, Sky Morse, Sweet Pond Road. Beth, can you tell us, so we understand the distinction between the two funds? We understand that Article Six that was passed was to include funding towards a truck fund, which is specific for the truck fund. That passed. This is for a general capital fund at this point? And so in theory, this, these funds, previously, these went to pay the bond on the fire station. But there is no restriction on these funds at this point? And so is a change needed? Would the change really be to the other funds?
Right, yes.
In order to co-mingle them?
Thank you for that, yeah.
And so this may not be the time to make this change.
Exactly. Yeah, I think what Dolores is proposing is combining the two funds into one, which would actually then eliminate this Article Seven entirely because it would increase our capital fund by this thirty-five thousand in our general budget. So that's something, if it's something that the town is interested in doing, we could put that forward in our request next year, if that makes sense. Because I don't think it makes a difference this year, we're just building these funds up. But if it was a change we wanted to make going forward, it would make sense to me that we would move the thirty-five thousand that's currently in Article Seven into our general fund next year, and present it to you that way.
Into the general capital fund?
Yes.
Okay. Question over the corner? You can use both mics.
Norine Woodruff, I live on Maryknock Road in Guilford. I just want to take a step back and address the money that we're giving. And someone had asked, all these funds that we're building for later, for the trucks, are we not going to put that in a CD to build three percent interest while we're waiting to use it? And how are you going to separate those if you put them together?
Okay, well, right now, we're just discussing the amendment to.
We can't amend, if we take it away, then the funds build.
Microphone.
If we're giving them, I get it, if you put it in one account, then how are you separating? Are you able to separate that?
Later, in order for us, in order for us as a town to build interest on these funds that are just sitting waiting to use later. So you're trying to build the income ahead of time, so you're not paying bigger loans later. Well, utilize the banks and create those, that money revenue also for us right now. So I agree that you get the extra money, but build more on it, so.
Any other discussion of the amendment? David.
David Eastman. I just wonder if it makes, with what Ellie said and the clarification from Beth, that it wouldn't make more sense to recommend that it come as a single fund, clearly from, for next year, combine them next year when all the legalities and details can be thrashed out, and really keep it clear and straightforward for this year and.
Dolores, you want to stick with your amendment?
No, I guess that makes sense.
You want to withdraw your amendment?
I'll withdraw it.
Okay, amendment has been withdrawn.
Yes, that was gentle.
Lisa Ford, or Lisa, sorry? Wait, there, wait, wait.
Rick. So this is not about the amendment because Dolores withdrew, so I just had a separate question.
Sure.
Point of order.
Oh, point of order.
Chip also needs to rescind the second.
Thank you.
I will rescind in seconds on that motion as well. Next year, Dolores, we got it.
The amendment is off the floor.
I just was curious, what are the current balances of those two reserve funds?
The truck fund balance is $180,000, and the capital reserve is $142,000.
Other questions, comments? Am I missing anyone? Okay, I think we're ready to vote on Article Seven. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $35,000 for the Guilford Volunteer Fire Department Capital Improvements Fund? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. And you have approved Article Seven. Is Danny Engold here? I, he can do a quick emergency management announcement at eleven, and it's about a little after.
Thank you. I'm Dan Engold, I'm the co-director for.
Okay, Dan, you want to come up front so people don't have to turn around? You want to come up front so people don't have to turn around or sit?
I'm Dan Engold, I'm down in Green River. I am the co-director of Emergency Management for the town of Guilford. Jared Bristol, who's also the fire chief, is the other co-director. So I just want to say a couple of things real quick. On page forty-one, you'll see what we've been up to in the last year and where we're going forward. A couple of things that people will see in this next year. If you remember, March of 2023, so just two years ago, we had that horrific snow and ice storm. And we had certain areas, including Green River where I am, the river road, that were totally isolated. One thing we learned from that, as well as many other things, is about communication, that being able to communicate to our townspeople, residents in Guilford, pretty important. So one of the things that we're setting up are what are called hub managers. So we're looking to do twelve different hub managers throughout different neighborhoods of Guilford, who will be your emergency point of contact. So they'll be reaching out to you in the next year. We've already identified eight, we're going to go up to twelve. Within the next year, they're going to be having radios, which are the same radios that the Fire Department and the truck, the road crew has. So anyhow, you're going to be hearing from them, they'll be reaching out to the different neighborhoods. A point of contact, both for gathering information, what is needed out there, what's the current situation, and then sharing information. What roads are closed, what's happening to the power grid, what's happening to those who are vulnerable and need help. So anyhow, you're going to be seeing that in the next year, that is a town effort. So it's, it's, be looking out for that. And the other thing I do want to say is, we currently have about twelve to fourteen volunteers. Thank you so much for volunteering. It's again, you know, volunteer, you don't get paid for this. If anyone else wants to volunteer, we're always looking for more. Anyhow, be safe out there, and we look forward to seeing how we can prepare Guilford to be more resilient for these emergencies that seem to be happening more and more. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. The Guilford Emergency Management Team is a model in the state. They've been very proactive on your behalf. Article Eight, do I hear a motion?
Article Eight, shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of thirty, thirty? Three thousand for the healthcare and rehabilitation services of southeastern Vermont, HCRS, to provide services to individuals, families, and children who are living with mental illness, developmental disabilities, and substance use disorders. Twenty-four of VSA, paragraph twenty-six ninety-one.
Is there a second?
Well, let me just add that HCRS is in the third year of the, of the three-year petition requirement for being added to the Social Services article.
So if they're approved, then they will not have to petition next year? Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There a second? Okay. Okay.
Excuse me?
Ellie.
If people are going to second, can you raise your hand? Because I can't hear you when there's no mics. Thank you.
Any discussion on Article Eight? Which I forgot to place on the floor by saying, shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $3,000 for healthcare and rehabilitation services of southeastern Vermont, HCRS, to provide services to individuals, families, and children who are living with mental illness, developmental disabilities, and substance. mental illness, developmental disabilities, and substance use disorders? Any discussion? Yes?
Jeanred Weatherhollow, you said this is his third year, and if it's approved, they don't have to request next year, or they can't request next year?
No, they don't have to petition for, for funding.
So that means it's an automatic next year?
No, it just means they go on the, on the, or the long article of all the different organizations.
Thank you.
Is that correct? But to get on that list, you have to successfully petition and be funded three years in a row. Any other questions? Okay, we'll vote on Article eight. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of three thousand dollars for healthcare and rehabilitation services of southeastern Vermont, HCRS, to provide services to individuals, families, and children who are living with mental illness, developmental disabilities, and substance use disorders? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. And you have approved Article eight. Article nine, do I hear a motion?
Okay, I move the following motion. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of fourteen thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars for the following human service organizations as per twenty-four VSA, section two-five-nine-one. And with your indulgence, I'll just read the names of them, not the rest of them. You can follow along and see what they do if you're not familiar with them. Interaction, formerly Youth Services, Women's Freedom Center, Groundworks Collaborative, Retired Senior Volunteer Program, Senior Solutions, Rattleboro Area Hospice, Gathering Place, Rattleboro Senior Meals, AIDS Project of Southern Vermont, The Mover, formerly Connecticut River Transit, Southeastern Vermont Community Action, SEFC, and Guilford Cares.
Okay, is there a second? Did you get that, Ellie?
I saw some other hands, but she wasn't.
Okay. Okay, Article nine. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of fourteen thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars for the following human service organizations? Interaction, formerly Youth Services, one thousand six hundred and five dollars. Women's Freedom Center, one thousand dollars. Groundworks Collaborative, one thousand dollars. Retired Senior Volunteer Program, four hundred and eighty-five dollars. Senior Solutions, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Rattleboro, Rattleboro Area Hospice, three hundred dollars. Gathering Place, five hundred dollars. Rattleboro Senior Meals, three hundred and fifty dollars. AIDS Project of Southern Vermont, three hundred and fifty dollars. The Mover, two hundred and fifty dollars. SEFC, two thousand and forty dollars. Guilford Cares, six thousand dollars. Is there any discussion?
Hi, Lauren Malch, I live on Stage Road. Both of those lists didn't include the visiting nurse in hospice for Vermont, New Hampshire, six thousand three hundred dollars in our warning.
We do not serve Guilford, and we got a letter recently to that effect. Their, their services are not offered to Guilford. This was the case last year. We didn't vote on them last year either. They were removed from this list, and they still remain off of it.
Other questions, discussions? All right, seeing none, we'll vote on Article nine. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of fourteen thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars for the following human service organizations? And I, you just heard me read them, do you want me to read them again?
No.
No, no, no. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. And you have approved Article nine. Article ten, do I hear a motion?
Article ten, shall the voters of the town of Guilford authorize general fund expenditures for operating expenses of eight hundred and five thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars, of which six hundred and forty-one thousand one hundred and sixteen shall be raised by taxes, and one hundred and sixty-four thousand six hundred and sixty dollars by non-tax revenues for the fiscal year July first, twenty twenty-five, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, based on seventeen VSA, section two-six-six-four. Couple of notes on this. This year's budget adds just one thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars to the previous year's budget, which is a zero percent change, which actually represents large cuts across the board in several areas, because, as we heard earlier, with the highway department, a four percent increase would have been level funded. Law enforcement, the sixty-eight thousand dollars approved from last year will be put into an assigned fund balance fund, as work is continuing on the regional policing effort. Legal services, that's now reduced based on this year's expense, and other reductions such as HRA, planning, conservation, and recreation commissions will draw from reserves this year. And health insurance premiums, as I'm sure everybody has noticed, if you looked at the town report, have been dramatically increased.
Is there a second? Miranda. Article ten, shall the voters of the town of Guilford authorize general fund expenditures for operating expenses of eight hundred and five thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars, of which six hundred and forty-one thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars shall be raised by taxes, and one hundred and sixty-four thousand six hundred and sixty dollars by non-tax revenues for the fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-five, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Is there a discussion?
I want to ask a few questions.
Dolores Clark.
Oh, sorry, Dolores Clark. About the, last year, we voted to put an assistant for both the administrator and the treasurer of not more than fourteen thousand four hundred and forty dollars. We went over that amount for both. And this year, the treasurer now wants, well, what would be eleven thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars more than what was proposed last year. And the, there, she's asking for twenty-five thousand five hundred and seven dollars for an assistant treasurer. I don't know how that works when we voted for something not more than, and now we're doing triple the amount. So I would like to go back to the not more than for both the town administrator, assistant town administrator, and assistant treasurer. I realize there's a lot of work in both of them, but there's also, like, that is an extraordinary jump in, in the cost. So what I would like to do is make the amendment on, on those lines to go back to what we had voted for last year, which was the eleven thousand four hundred and forty dollars. So there was a difference for the treasurer of sixteen thousand three hundred and seventy dollars, and the administrator was four thousand five hundred and eighty-four dollars.
So how much are you proposing every reducing the budget?
I don't have my calculator, but the addition of those two, sixteen thousand three hundred and seventy, plus four thousand five hundred and eighty-four dollars. Who's got their calculator? Guess we could use that.
Can someone do that?
Ellie, Ellie's got it.
Ellie, sorry. Yeah, you better leave a microphone with Ellie, she might need it for a little bit.
Thank you. Dolores, you said sixteen thousand three hundred and seventy and four thousand five hundred and eighty-four, correct?
Yeah, there might be a little change in there.
Okay. Okay, so those two numbers together are twenty thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars.
Is there a second? So the amendment would, would read, we have to change the eight hundred and five, seven hundred and seventy-six thousand figure, and I think the six hundred and forty-one, one sixteen figure. Is that correct, Ellie? Okay, can someone do that and give me those numbers? You could hear a pin drop.
Mr. Moderator, I have a point of order.
A point of order from Don.
Don McLean Packer Corners wrote, "It's my recollection, according to Vermont statute, that town meeting, it's permissible to amend the overall budget amount, but it is not permitted to line item those changes." In other words, it's, it's okay for the amendment to say, "Cut this amount and reduce the budget to X," but not to go in and cherry pick which items that are to be changed. That's up to the, essentially up to the select board if the budget is cut. Thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's a gray area legally. There's never been a thinner decision on that. I think this, this amendment is, is just simply reducing the budget by the amount. And then, you know, it would be up to the select board to decide how to spend the appropriation. Once approved.
Sorry, this budget is already zero percent increase from last year. So that is a very large reduction. Just pointing that out again, as Chip did.
Yeah, it's, it's twenty thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars. But, you know, in, in the overall budget, it's not, it's not enough to say that it wasn't warranted, in my opinion. So you have new figures?
Yes. If I were to reduce the total operating expenses by twenty thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars, it would be seven hundred and eighty-four dollars, eight hundred and twelve.
Seven hundred and eighty-four thousand?
Eight hundred and twelve. Yes.
Okay. And the other figure for the six forty-one, one hundred and six? Or do, do we not need that?
I'm being told I do not need that, but...
Okay.
Because you're reducing the overall budget. At some point, can I also speak to this?
Yes, you may, of course.
After whoever else is in this room.
Sarah? Do we have a second on the amendment? Thank you. Who was that? Do we have a second? Okay. Okay, Sarah?
So I, my question is about the amendment. I'm, I'm having trouble following where, how we got the twenty thousand. And maybe Ellie or Dolores could answer that, because in where I'm looking in the town budget, if we're look, if these numbers are coming specifically from the town clerks and the town treasurers areas, that the reduction in the town clerk budget from last year is a reduction, a reduction of twelve hundred dollars. And as I, this is a point of information, this, we had this debate last year because it was a separate series of amendments that were made. They were not presented as part of the budget by the select board. So it was a, it was a proposal that came out of the town clerk's office, separate from the budget proposal. So perhaps, Dolores, maybe you can tell me how you got the twenty thousand, because I'm, I'm a little confused.
We had voted fourteen thousand four hundred dollars to be split part-time, ten hours a week, for assistant treasurer and assistant town administrator. Last year, they did go over that. But this year, the assistant treasurer has gone up to twenty-three thousand five hundred and seventy dollars. And the difference?
Can I just say something? Last, last year, the amendment to add the fourteen something was in addition to the already existing budget that we had for an assistant treasurer. The assistant town administrator was in your position, so those two were combined to make that total that you're talking about, the fourteen, whatever it was. There was already an existing budget for an assistant treasurer.
For, for twenty-three thou, or twenty, twenty-three thousand five hundred and seventy? So we need, you, the assistant treasurer, we recall, we're, we were going to have ten hours a week for both the assistant treasurer and the assistant, your assistant, Erica. Now we're up to twenty hours a week just for the assistant treasurer. I'm not saying Ellie isn't doing a bang-up job. I'm just saying that, that to go up that much is, is quite a big jump. And also, as far as like saying we're less than last year, we had sixty-eight thousand, we have, it is less than last year, but we had an extra sixty-eight thousand dollars in there. So if you guys are building on your budget from that, that was something extra for the police thing. So to say, well, we haven't gone up because we're still lower than sixty-eight thousand, am I looking at this wrong? Where sixty-eight thousand was above and beyond, so now if you're saying, well, we didn't go up above, we're actually lower, are you taking that extra sixty-eight thousand dollars into account in, in, when you're saying that? You know what I mean?
Kelly, you want to respond?
Thank you. I would like to respond, if that's okay with the select board. I'm going to address the hours for the positions in the town office. So in fiscal year twenty-three, we voted for fiscal year twenty-four's budget. The plan was town clerk, thirty hours, her assistant, ten hours, myself, forty hours, no, excuse me, thirty hours, and an assistant for the treasurer for thirty hours. Town administrator, forty hours.
Ellie, you want to just point out what's on the screen?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. We're getting there.
Yeah, I know. So that was the plan for two thousand twenty-four. Two thousand twenty-four came, we started, things changed. Actually, I could even go back before that. Things changed the year before in terms of the splitting of time between the town clerk and the town treasurer. And I ended up without an assistant, and Danielle, excuse me, the town clerk, was, took forty hours a week so that she could continue her job as town clerk until she, and also the assistant, until she could find someone to find an assist, be an assistant town clerk. someone to find an assist, be an assistant town clerk. Let's jump to next year, then. So, plan was town clerk 30 hours, her assistant 10 hours. I asked for an assistant. I was working 40 hours, I asked for an assistant for 10 hours. Town administrator also asked for an assistant for 10 hours. We were increasing our overall time between the two of us by 20 hours a week so that we could, we ended up splitting that job between, one person took that job and did both those 10-hour-a-week positions. You're right, you're right, sorry about that. We had two different people come in. There's a lot of changes that have occurred, so I'm trying to get it all straight. So this, for 2000, fiscal year '25, which is the one we're in right now, we started off with that plan that we just talked about. Everything changed in August, when we found ourselves without a town clerk and an assistant town clerk. So the rest of the staff came together and figured out how to do the job because we immediately had an election, the general election. We had taxes due. And there was a significant amount of work to do because we were down two people. So the schedule changed and we made do the best we could with what we had. And in order to do that, we increased the time of the person who was Erica's assistant to take on some time as town clerk. I took time on as town clerk, had to reduce my time as treasurer. The assistant treasurer had to up their time to cover some of what I wasn't able to do, because there's only so many hours in a day. And we had a volunteer who came in and helped us. I think it was a tremendous effort. For fiscal year '26, we are hoping to go back to town clerk 30 hours, assistant town clerk 10 hours. But at first, I'm going to have to be doing some of that assistant town clerk because it's going to take time for the new town clerk to get someone in as their assistant. Our town administrator will continue to work her hours and have an assistant once we find one. So did I cover everything? Yeah, oh, treasurer? Oh, yeah, me. I will be working 40 hours a week as treasurer, as delinquent tax collector, and as the person who works with Algiers Fire District. I want to remind folks, though, that before, what is the phrasing I used in the thing? The money that goes to the delinquent tax collector is usually the penalty that the town receives for delinquent taxes. As an hourly employee, I thought it was not appropriate for me to take that money, the penalty, on top of my hourly salary. And as I said last year, that money goes back into the general fund because I wanted an assistant. So what's usually goes into that penalty fund annually is between $15,000 and $20,000. So that's money that's going back into the general fund to help fund the assistant treasurer. And also because I'm doing the Algiers Fire District work, there's $8,500 additionally that comes into the town office to go towards the general fund. So I don't have a problem asking for an assistant town treasurer, because I feel like we need it. The work needs to get done. There's no question in my mind that we have pulled together the last year, two years, and really have gotten as much work done as we could. And I feel like we're doing a good job. So that's all I got to say.
Well, thank you, then, Lisa.
I just wanted to amplify what Ellie just said. Our previous delinquent tax collector used the penalty money herself as she was entitled to do by statute. And so Ellie is making a continuous contribution. Not only is she working with people really compassionately to make sure that they can work at a program to take care of their delinquent taxes and also work at a program with people who anticipate that they're going to have a hard time. But she also has donated what could rightfully be hers to our town.
Lisa?
I was just going to bring up the same point, that the previous delinquent tax collector kept the money, whereas Ellie's putting it back in the fund.
Wait, is there anyone else who wants to speak? That had their hand up before the question's been called on the amendment? Okay, in the back. Kelly.
Kelly Young, Coolidge Highway. Just sort of for some additional information from Ellie, so we can have a greater kind of context on this. So it sounds like you're doing two other jobs in addition to the treasurer. Can you just give us an assessment of how much time that takes away from your treasurer responsibilities, the time that you can spend on that, so that we can kind of understand the, maybe the additional need for that treasurer? Just to sort of give a better context. Thank you.
Honestly, it's really hard to divide up all I do in a day. Because I'm, you know, one minute I'm working on delinquent taxes, the next minute I'm taking phone calls about the homestead education, or the homestead declaration. The next, I'm trying to help out the town clerk because they're in the middle of six other things. And so it's hard to really delineate how much time is spent in each thing, and it varies from week to week. So I don't know what to tell you.
That's okay. Oh, Linda, maybe you weren't here, but you can't just call, shout out, call the question. You've got to raise your hand and be recognized. Is there anyone who had their hand up before the question was called? Scott.
Thank you, Skymore Sweet, Lee Road. So if I'm understanding the subject of the discussion, we're looking at the top of page 12 in the treasurer budget.
You're in the town report?
I'm in the town report, top of page 12. And I'm looking at a change in the far-right column. Dolores, correct me if I'm going down the wrong path here. Is that right? Okay, change in the far-right column, an increase in the total of $13,752. That's what we're discussing. And if we go back through the history, if we go to the far-left column, budget '24, $64,000, call it 500, budgeted $64,900, actual, pretty close in my perspective. Then the next year, budget $66,300, and year-to-date, $33,000 spend against that. And that is also, also includes losing two members of the town office staff. And so we're in a bit of a rebuilding year here, as they say in the sports world. And so we're proposing a total of $80,000, which is an increase of $13,000 from last year's $66,000. And I understand that the reasoning behind this is we need to increase the assistant treasurer's hours from 10 hours to 20 hours. Is that correct? Yeah, okay. And if I recall, going back quite a ways, when Penny was town treasurer, she had two assistant treasurers, each at 20 hours? This is ancient history, so.
Ellie says that's not, that's not correct.
That's not true?
Assistant treasurer and assistant town clerk.
Okay, she had assistant treasurer and assistant town clerk. Either way, what we're talking about is increasing the assistant treasurer's hours by 10 hours. And that is the justification for the $13,000. No question, just clarification. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the amendment? Okay, the amendment has been made and seconded. If you approve the amendment, Article 10 will now read, "Shall the voters of the town of Guilford authorize general fund expenditures of operating expenses of $784,812, of which $641,116 shall be raised by taxes and $164,660 by non-tax revenue for fiscal year July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2026?"
So an aye vote would mean you support the amendment?
An aye vote will mean you support reducing the budget by, to that voter figure, $784,812. And nay vote means you oppose the amendment. All those in favor say aye? All those opposed say nay?
Nay!
And you have rejected the amendment. So now we're back to the article. Is there any other discussion or questions about the article? As originally proposed. I see no hands, so I think we're ready to vote on Article 10. Shall the voters of the town of Guilford authorize generalized, sorry, general fund expenditures of, for operating expenses of $805,776, of which $641,116 shall be raised by taxes and $164,660 by non-tax revenues for the fiscal year July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2026? All those in favor say aye?
Aye!
All those opposed say nay? The ayes appear to have it, and you have approved Article 10. I think at this moment, it'd be time, good time for John Gaggen to come up with, I think Brian Reamer's going to, Brian and John, I think are going to come up together for the... Do you want us to move over here? With your permission, if there's no objection, we'll allow John Gaggen, Principal of the Guilford School, to speak. Is there any objection? No, okay. Gaggen, John?
Good morning, I'm Brian Reamer, Bullet Drive. As many of you know, after 22 years of service, Sean Murphy has decided to retire from the Wyndham Southeast Supervisory District or School Board. He began his involvement as a member of the Citizens Advisory Committee that managed a multimillion-dollar renovation of a high school. After that, he was asked to fill a vacancy on the WSESD School Board and has been a director ever since. Sean has helped guide the board during the merger of the Guilford School with the schools of Brattleboro, Dummerston, and Putney. He's been a constant advocate for the students of Guilford and all the district towns by serving not only on the School Board, but also the Wyndham Southeast Supervisory Union Board. He's advocated for diversity and social justice. He's shaped policies that promote a positive learning environment. He's chaired the WSESD Finance Committee, and in that role especially, he's helped us all make sense of the very confusing funding and budgeting process of our schools. It's not the norm these days to hear that somebody stays in the same job for more than 20 years, although I commend those people that were mentioned earlier who have been volunteering around Guilford for 22, 26, 27 years, and some of the people we learned about earlier today. But it is a volunteer job, and doing that, be doing that for 20 years is an accomplishment. And Sean has managed that accomplishment with curiosity, persistence, and a great deal of enthusiasm. Our children, their families, and our community are evidence of Sean's dedication to quality education for everyone in the district. So Sean Murphy, thank you very much for your commitment to Andrew's service.
Good morning. And I'm a little shorter than Brian. There we go. There we go. And a little shorter than you, too. I said when I first started this job. So this is my, it's my pleasure, this is my 29th Guilford Town Meeting that I've had the privilege of attending as a resident. And I said when I first started my job, I was 6'5" and I had a mane of hair. I don't know what happened. So fitting, Brian, a very fitting tribute to Sean. And Sean, it is my pleasure, on behalf of our Superintendent Mark Spino, to read a short letter from Mark to you. Guilford Town Meeting, on behalf of the WSESU community, I would like to express our heartfelt appreciation to Sean Murphy for his 22 years of dedicated service as a School Board Director. Over the years, Sean has faced numerous challenges and issues, always navigating them with commitment and determination. What stands out most about Sean is his unwavering focus on keeping the needs of students at the forefront of his decision-making and actions. Sean's service to our community has been not only consistent, but also remarkable. And we are deeply thankful for his incredible dedication and tireless contributions. We are truly grateful for Sean's exemplary service and the positive impact he has had on our schools and students. Sincerely, Mark V. Spino, Superintendent of Schools.
Hi, Sean. I'm Sarah Rosso, Lee Road. I'm here on behalf of the Guilford Central School staff and the Guilford Central School PTO. And John and Brian said it so well, I'm not going to repeat what they said, but I just wanted to tell you, Sean, that as I went around and asked staff members to sign a card from the staff to give to you, everyone who heard your name smiled, teachers who have been at the school for a number of years reflected on memories of you visiting their classrooms, teaching for wins lessons. classrooms, teaching four wins lessons many years ago, and just how, how much of a presence you have been in, in our school and with our students over the years. So thank you for your service. We're very grateful.
There is a school.
No, it's a good time to see it, and then break for lunch probably.
So, before we go, so there's been a lot said this morning in reference to rising property taxes, the need for school, reform in the state of Vermont, and those are all very real issues. I want you to, first I want to say to you, thank you from the bottom of my heart and from our staff's heart for your support for public education, for your support of Guilford Central School specifically. We value, we treasure, and we take our responsibility very deeply of having your children in our care. We have a, we have a short video here that captures a little bit of what we do here at, thank you, David, a little bit of what we do here at school day in and day out. And before we do that, Erica, I want to thank our mic runners today, students at Guilford Central School, Bravo. We have wonderful kids in this town. So with that, we have a short eight-minute video of some of the things we do here in this building.
Today, we will be showcasing some of the amazing work GCS students have made this year. First up, we have Miss Tat and fifth graders sharing their recent project-based learning unit on forests.
We've been studying the rainforests in fifth grade for our EL units, and we were really excited to get to know the trees here, to be able to do some comparisons. So it was really fun for these kids to go out in the woods and learn about the different trees and make connections to who's eating things from the trees, all the different animals, and then really to have some hands-on studies as well. And the neatest thing about this project that I've loved is that it's had a connection to every core area for academics. They've been doing math to find the different height and diameter of the trees and the age. They've been doing science really deeply, social studies related to biomes of the world, and tons of writing, they've been writing summaries on all different things. So it's just been really fun to see that come together and to see them lit up about their learning.
Quadra are tools that scientists use to isolate the area for sample purposes. Our quadra is located in our forest classroom. It is forty-four feet by forty-four feet, and we specifically interviewed trees. The trees inside are labeled with numbers one through twenty. We have many different trees in our quadra, like beech trees, red maple, hamlak, and sugar-labeled trees. We have a quadra model right here, and the sugar's maples are in yellow, the red maples are the red, the purple is the beech, and the green is the hamlak. So we've been trying to find the age, height, circumference, and diameter of the trees in our quadra, and these are some of the things that we need for it. Yes, so you're gonna need a tape measure, a yardstick, a cotton pad, and some string. We use this quadrant to recreate what scientists would use, a quadrant, the quadrant data. We have the number of trees, we have the types of trees, we have the circumference in inches, we have the age, which is averaged, and the height, which is averaged. But we didn't only measure inside the quadra, we also measured outside the quadrant. And the oldest tree outside the quadrant is a white pine and is two-hundred-and-fifty years old. We have been studying the biomes of the world, there are seven temporal biomes in the world. We are in the temperate deciduous forest, and we are studying the rainforest. The temperate deciduous forest is the one forest that has all four seasons. Our food chain has a path of energy that's, that's, I don't remember, but it's a chain of, of food chain. Well, example of the food chain is sun, which is a green maple, deer, white head deer, deer, bobcat, deer, bear, deer, lion, and duck, a duck. There are also few webs, which look a bit like bees.
Our food chains include webs connected with all the plants and animals in our biome. We had a great time learning about our temperate deciduous forest, and we appreciate this chance to share our work with you.
Nice work, fifth grade. Next, sixth graders will share highlights from a few of their favorite projects.
This year, we did a project called Jimmy Sour in library with class of the Savian. The idea was that you research something, and then work by yourself or with a person or group to make a video, poster, slideshow, or anything that you can create. After working hard on our creations, we presented it in front of the class. My group researched how a slide has changed over the years, but there are also projects we've done with students, like a poster about fast food and a video about a hacker. As sixth graders, we definitely know enough independence during this project, like with the research and taking the video.
The sixth grade presidential election is to elect this student to be the president of sixth grade. They have the classroom jobs such as picking our student's chip of the month and buying his fries. We had a preliminary election to allow everyone except three people. We then split into three groups, each with a candidate, a campaign manager, and three media specialists. We made commercials, stickers, and magazines. After that, we had a debate that all of the grades watched. Then sixth grade was set up a voting booth in the cafeteria, and one by one, every grade became the guardian of the sixth, voting on a candidate. As a sixth grader, being part of the election was a fun experience. I was named as campaign manager. Being a campaign manager means a campaign candidate, or speeches, and ordering everything from a presidential candidate you were elected. As you may know, maybe when we elected, after lots of hard work in our class race, she worked very hard to be a good president, and she's making the school a better place. I had a lot of fun, and I think my team did, too.
From my perspective, as a candidate, it was really fun to have a team that worked and helped organize commercials, stickers, and other merchandise to bring out my team. This is the kind of thing you have to put effort into to make it, to make it good, and make sure you have a good chance. Even though I lost, it was fun to have that experience, to work hard and become a good president. One of the challenges was having a debate. The debate had many challenging questions to answer that could decide if I won or not. That's my perspective for the sixth grade presidential election. Thank you for listening to my section of the video.
Finally, we close with an inspirational speech written by second grader Asa M. in honor of Martin Luther King Junior Day.
I have a dream that one day no one will throw trash on the ground. I have a dream that everyone will clean up the earth. I have a dream that everyone will throw trash in a trash can. I have a dream that one day the ocean will not have any trash in it. I have a dream that the animals in the ocean will not die because of the trash in, in the ocean. I have a dream that one day the whole world will be clean. I have a dream that one day we will not use as much plastic. I have a dream that one day, when the world is clean, it will stay like that forever. I have a dream that one day we will not make trash.
Thanks for joining.
So, oh, John?
Yeah. Yeah, John Shaw, East Mountain Road. I just wanted to quickly say, before we break for lunch, that...
I just, Laura mentioned to me that she had forgotten in the library report to talk about the surveys that were out on the chairs, and everybody has a survey, and if you didn't get one here, there's more on the library table in the hallway. And that's an important way for us to hear from people about what they want their library to do, and it helps us make our decisions on moving forward with the library. So if everybody can fill out their survey, you can drop it off at the library table in the hallway, or you can take it with you and you can just drop it at the library one day when you're going by. All right, thank you. Thank you, John. Yeah, I was supposed to tell you all that there's a box on the library table where you can drop your surveys. At this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn for lunch.
I have one announcement before we do that. The childcare, any parents who have utilized the childcare this morning, the childcare is ending, so pick up your kids before you head out or head to lunch. In the preschool classroom.
Yeah, don't forget your child.
Kyle Parker, West Guilford. We have three seemingly quick articles left. I'd make a, like to make a motion, we just get these over with and get outside this afternoon.
Okay, you want to go for it? Okay, can someone let the country store know that we're gonna try and whip through these last three articles? Or not, if we have to discuss them? Is there any objection to doing that? All right, now we're up to Article 11. Do I hear a motion?
Shall the town authorize the town treasurer, this is Article 11, pursuant to thirty-two VSA Section 4791, to collect current taxes without discount?
Is there a second?
Second.
Article 11, shall the town authorize a town treasurer pursuant to thirty-two VSA 4791 to collect current taxes without discount? Seeing none, we will now vote on Article 11. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And you've opposed Article 11. Couple things, please stay for lunch, you know, don't just, it's a great event. Also, there's gonna be other business after Article 14. Article 12.
Shall the voters authorize payment of current taxes on October 15th by physical delivery or online payment to the tax collector before 5:00 p.m. on that date? Thirty-two VSA Section 4773. Postmarked payments received after 5:00 p.m. on October 15th will be late.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Good, you have seconded. Shall the voters authorize payment of current taxes on October 15th by physical delivery or online payment to the tax collector before 5:00 p.m. on that date? Thirty-two VSA 4773. Postmarked payments received after 5:00 p.m. on October 15th will be late. Any comment or discussion?
I have a little explanation. This is the only selectword-promoted article this year. The town's treasurer would like to make this distinction due to recent unreliability of the postal service. This is something the voters need to approve. And, you know, I just wanted to add as a postscript that this year, beginning this year, the town can accept taxes via bank checks or also credit card payments. So that's an addition for convenience for people.
I see no hands, so let's vote on Article 12. Shall the voters authorize payment of current taxes on October 15th by physical delivery or online payment to the tax collector before 5:00 p.m. on that date? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. And you have passed Article 12. Article 13, do I hear a motion?
Article 13, shall the town vote that overdue taxes will bear interest at a rate of one percent per month or fraction thereof from the due date of such tax to be charged after October 15th? Thirty-two VSA Section 5136. Standard article voted on each year.
Is there a second? Miranda. Article 13, shall the town vote that overdue taxes will bear interest at a rate of one percent per month or fraction thereof from the due date of such tax to be charged after October 15th? Any discussion? Okay, let's vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. And you have approved Article 13. Article 14, any other business that may lawfully come before the town? Is there any such business?
I would like the town to take a simple vote in favor of the U.S. Constitution being the overall governing for what happens in the U.S. So it's just asking for a vote of approval of the U.S. Constitution.
So straw vote, any discussion before we take the vote?
It's a second.
Second, well, this is other business. It's not a binding vote.
Oh, okay.
It's just a, just a straw vote. All those in favor of approving the Constitution of the United States as the overall governing entity for this country, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And you have approved the straw vote. Any other, you know, other business over on the side? Can you run her a microphone? Or she's got one?
Hi, I'm Deana Cale, and I'm from Green River. And a group of folks in Putney put together a letter and asked for help for other folks from other towns to read the letter at town meetings. So I kind of decided to volunteer, and I'm scared to death, but here goes. "We, the residents of Guilford, resolve to formally request that our governor, Phil Scott, publicly reaffirm his commitment to upholding the rule of law, protecting the rights of Ramonders and the Vermont Constitution amidst federal overreach, even if confronted with federal threats related to funding or other matters. Furthermore, we encourage him to proactively leverage his authority and engage with his colleagues nationwide to advocate for the protection of the rights of government personnel, immigrants, and individuals belonging to the LGBTQIA..." immigrants, and individuals belonging to the LGBTQIA, disabled, and BIPOC communities. Additionally, we call on him to work with his colleagues on both the state and federal level to safeguard critical services such as Medicaid, Medicare, and Social Security, which are essential to the well-being of all Vermonters." Thank you.
Were you asking for a straw vote or not?
That would be wonderful.
Any comment before this straw vote? I can't repeat what was read, but all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. And you have passed that straw vote. Are there any other announcements? Linda.
So Sean Murphy is not the only Murphy who has faithfully served the town of Guilford for many years in a volunteer capacity. And as chair of the Conservation Commission, I would like to acknowledge Karen Murphy's contributions. And we have a plaque for Karen. Whereas Karen Murphy has served on the Guilford Conservation Commission continuously for 14 years, and whereas she involunteered countless hours supporting its activities, and whereas she has faithfully served as clerk, cheerfully submitting minutes for correction and approval for most of that time, and whereas her skills at identifying plants has supported our work managing invasive species, and whereas her knowledge of Guilford's natural heritage has made her an invaluable leader of walks and workshops, but most importantly, whereas she has been a major force in keeping Guilford's Conservation Commission true to its founding mission, therefore, the Guilford Conservation Commissioners resolve to express our lasting gratitude to Karen Murphy on the occasion of her retirement, alas for us, from our group at Guilford's Town Meeting. And before I bring the district, Karen, there's a similar one for Linda Lemke, who has served the same amount of time but is not here today, but we will make sure she gets it. Karen, thank you so much.
I should also mention that we now have two vacancies on the Conservation Commission.
Okay, any other announcements?
Hi, I'm Lisa Ford, and before everybody leaves for lunch, I just wanted to put a little plug in for myself. I'm running as a write-in candidate for the position of Town Auditor, the three-year term. And the other person running for that term is Lindsay Mitchell. And I just want to clarify, if you would like to vote for me, you would see on your ballot Lindsay Mitchell, and you could write in my name, Lisa Ford. And I do have experience review, being the board chair of the Boys and Girls Club. I've been on multiple audit, I've been involved with multiple audit reviews, as well as managing budgets, fiscal responsibility, and making sure the health of, the fiscal health of an organization, you know, goes forward. So I just wanted to let people know that. All right.
Good, all the announcements, there's a wonderful exhibit of photographs upstairs at the BBCC of Guilford scenes, people, events. It's worth, it's worth going up there and see it, it's great. Any other announcements? Earl Kyle.
Kyle Parker, Wes Guilford. I just want to make an announcement on behalf of the Cemetery Commission. On May 31st this year, we're having a work day, so we're looking for volunteers, just helping hands, you don't need any experience. We'll be down at the Maybauer Cemetery on Route 5. So you can get in touch with me or any of the other four members. So yeah, reach out, have a good day there.
Any other announcements before we adjourn? Ellie.
Please remember that we are voting for local officials and school, school board directors on Tuesday. The polls will be at Broadbrook Community Center from 10 to 7.
Anything else? All right, stay for lunch if you can. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
And a second? All those in favor of adjournings, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. [applause]